This funds out, hell, we just did not have.
Right.
Yeah.
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 Matt earlier today. And he did want me to say, uh, he's very sorry he couldn't make it tonight, but he is very much in favor of the pilot because he does believe that will help bring business to his business. So as a small business owner in town, he is interested in as many people to be able to shop at his his restaurant. So I did wanna bring that on comment to you. Um, I wanted to make a comment on a couple of items. Um, uh, number one, I see item A. Approving of a transfer of funds. I did look, look at this document and this appears to be over a million dollars that I believe came into existence. And was freed up with the sale of Maple, Maple Grove. And I see that the transfer is to um untie that from its investment process and move it into the general fund because of needs of the general fund. Um, I think it's probably time to see a budget amendment and understand exactly what the overruns are in the general fund. So we can have a better idea. What um, what we're up against um toward as we get now into the um second half of the year. So um, I guess if you choose to do that, I, I hate to just see it get spent because it was in, it was in place for housing needs. And so I would like to make sure that we're not just spending it on roads or symptoms. Um, quickly, because I know I'm probably running out of time, although I don't see the timer, so I should have brought my own. Um, I'd like to read uh Romans uh chapter twelve, verse two to five. Do not be conformed to this world, but be transformed by the renewal of your mind. That by testing you may discern what is in the will of God, what is good and acceptable and perfect. For by the grace given to me, I say to everyone among you, not to think of himself more highly than he ought to think, but to think with sober judgment, each according to measure of faith that God has assigned. For as in one body, we have many members and the members do not have the same function. So we, though many, are one body in Christ, individual members one another. I'd like to speak on behalf of the ordinance, if I still have time, twenty-five, twenty-five oh four, um, you'd have to have your Facebook turned off and not watching if you thought I wasn't. An approval of this. So yeah, thanks. Maybe we could get the timer on somewhere, so someone would know. I know, but you're supposed to have a display where the person can see it.
Would anybody else like to stand and address counsel?
Let me use this.
Yes, please.
Alex Harris, five oh one Bidwell Street. Thank you, guys. Um, two thousand seventy, that'll be the year that this pilot expires roughly. So you're gonna make a decision for future generations to lock this property out of the tax revenues of the city till two thousand seventy. What will all be and look like in two thousand seventy? Will all be in college be around? What's gonna happen? We're, we're right next to the I ninety-four corridor. That's a valuable piece of property. This is not a good deal. It's too long of a pilot. I think you can reconsider. If it's not a good deal, you don't have to take it. Understand there's pressure that this building might be condemned afterwards if we don't get a deal. I've been made aware that there's three other people interested in this pro- um property have been. So take your time, make a wise decision. The future depends on it. Thank you.
Tom gets to go first.
Uh, Tom Hunzorfer, eight oh three South Superior.
And the microphone.
Uh, Tom Hunzorfer, eight oh three South Superior. I just wanted to thank all of you on council and staff who have worked very hard on this issue. Um, I, I think I know all of you to varying degrees and you have really put your hearts into this. You've thought about it. Um, so I appreciate the seriousness with which you've taken this. It's a, it's a big deal for our community. Um, and as I've listened more and thought about it more, my sense is that we're really talking about two good things. One is the need for decent, affordable housing for residents of all levels. And we need more tax revenue from whether it's more business, uh, more homeownership where we have uh revenue coming in. But both of these things are important for our city. Uh, they've sort of collided uh on this project. Uh, so again, uh, my gratitude to all of you for the way you're considering this, for listening to the public as, as well as you have. And I hope whatever is decided, that all of you keep working together the way you have on this and keep thinking about, okay, these, these are both good things. So how do we do both of them here in town? Thank you.
Hello, I'm Rick Lang, Lib. Eight Ten, Haven Road. A couple of thoughts. This obviously has been difficult. I understand there are a lot of different views. But I think it boils down to just a couple of things in, in my estimation at least. I'm concerned that if we don't do something with Washington Gardner, a landmark is going to be lost. Even those may be valuable for future development. That's been a hard time. It's been a hard time finding anything to do with people who could actually develop Washington Gardner. So I appreciate the last minute efforts to come up with another plan, but I think this is the best we've had. And there's literally been, the college has been looking for years, finding somebody to take that. They never intended to keep him for the long term. So either we use it or we lose it to steal one thing saying. The bottom line for me is even though we would like to get more revenue out of it, any revenue we get out of it is more than we've had before because there's a tax incentive. And it seems smarter to me to get a small percent of something than a hundred percent of nothing.
Man Williams, Eaton Street. So I wasn't gonna come up here. I was like, man, you know, I pretty, I pretty much feel like decision is already made in most of y'all minds, you know what I mean? So I don't know what when my little two cents is gonna really add to it. But I really just echo the same sentiments as him, you know? My question was, was you know, like, if you don't do it, what else you gonna do? Like, we keep on seeing all of the schools, all of the buildings and stuff. You know what I mean? Getting ran down and replaced, you know, broken, broken down. It's like my school Caldwell. I'm afraid the same thing is gonna happen here, you know what I mean? And uh, my daughter is twenty-two and she lives in Jackson. When she came back from Costa Rica, she was looking for some affordable housing. A lot of y'all seem like y'all frowned upon affordable housing. But we got a lot of, you know, graduates and stuff that's gonna be needing that, you know what I mean? And so I think that this is very necessary, but it just seemed to me like I, I wasn't here last week and I watched it online. And I heard like a lot of different people, like one particular dentist was coming up here, aye, aye, aye. And I just, I just be feeling like, is this like what he wants? Yes. I mean, I ain't trying to just call the man out, you know what I mean? I don't know him, but it feels like a lot of y'all want the same thing that he want, you know what I'm saying? So my question would be was like, what if diamonds wanted this? What would you do there?
Good evening, council. Um, my thing is I heard some of the confusion, I call it confusion. Can you mention your name and that? Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, my name is Nora Jackson and I live at six oh one uh West uh Erie Street. And so the word logic, I don't understand the word logic coming out of some of the mouths, but you know, I would never put you guys down like that, but you have a lot of feedback that's on Facebook. That should not be so. Um, and we're talking about one another, putting one another down when all they're asking for is affordable housing and it's not right, you guys, okay? So the other thing, the outreach, Mayor, I do thank you for doing the outreach. But I know it was not in a timely manner that you couldn't look up all of what they have done before to try to help us out in another way. And then I keep hearing about the, the check, the taxes and you guys that are in businesses, have businesses downtown, they do know about uh Washington Gardner, you know that we have not had taxes and I don't know when from that building. So we're using some excuses that, that make no sense. And you guys that are business mind that sit around with this council, you know better than this. And so I just wanna say that, um, as the other ones said, I concur. I, I was surprised when both of them got up, but they've always been good people and they, you, you guys are good. And I thank God for that. That you didn't continue to go with all this or that. But I just want to see Albion to continue to prosper and that you meet the needs of all the people when you're yet sitting up here on the council, okay? And I do support the affordable housing.
Renee Miller, two oh eight Booth Drive. Um, I just wanna encourage you guys again. Um, I think I spoke at one of the other meetings. I just wanna encourage you to vote yes. Um, it is my belief that there's room for everyone. And I'm going to stand on that. It is room in this town for everyone from the bottom to the top. What, and we need all types of housing. You know, I, I thought about something and I was trying to articulate how to word it. And I thought about my grandparents. That they were transplanted from the south to Albion. They came from Arkansas. Farmers to work here. My grandfather came here to work. And with my grandmother, they built a family either. And here I stand today on their shoulders. And I've raised my family here. And I chose not to leave Albion. And I don't think Albion was built on just for the rich. These people were poor. And they came and they, it was blood, sweat and tears in this soil. So that Albion is what it is today. It's not their fault that the industry's closed. But they still have generations of families here that need. Everyone doesn't have a college degree. Everyone isn't smart. Everyone may not be able to make thirty dollars an hour. Maybe they, they just don't get it. But they do work at the KFCs and the family fairs and the businesses downtown and they, they still add value. So we can't lose sight of, there has to be room for them. We, we, we can't just keep pushing out people and deciding what has society come that we decide who is worthy. Housing, everybody need housing. I mean, my household generates a, a, a decent amount of money. I, I wouldn't benefit from that, but it doesn't stop me from wanting it for someone else. So I'm just saying, I encourage you to vote yes. And we are the same people that you want to support you in building two hundred thousand dollar homes. We're the same people. We're the one gonna support that. I wanna see it's looking beautiful. I've said it before. But don't, don't push other people out because that's what you want. Be encouraged.
I think we need to push the button.
There it goes. My name is Candace Hatman, Candace Chloe Hatman, I should say. I'm a lifelong resident of Albion and I've seen a lot of changes here. One thing I noticed about Al, we have not built any new housing since the late nineteen sixties and the nineteen seventies. People who move here are hard pressed to find someplace to live. And for me, this project is encouraging that we will have sixty-one families who could find a nice place to stay. And in order for businesses to come to Albion, because a lot of people say, well, we need more businesses. Yes, we do. But businesses are not going to come if their employees have no place to live. And everyone that lives in that complex will spend money in Albion. They'll go to family fair, they're going to the pharmacy, they're going to the Dollar Generals, they're going to Ace Hard. There are a lot of places that they can spend their money here and that will bring prosperity. Part of prosperity, because it's a more complex problem than that. But it helps the city when we have people spending money, living in the city instead of living in Jackson and spending their money in Jackson and working here. Living in Marshall and spending their money at home in Marshall. Or even Mark, Homer, Concord, Palmer. We want people to live here and spend their money here. Thank you for listening to me. And I agree that the council should vote yes on this project.
Hello, Linda Zeller, one thousand and one South Hannah Street in Albion. I wanna echo the thanks all around for all of the hard work and for all the feedback from everybody in the council. I especially wanna thank you, uh, Mayor and uh City Man, interim City Manager for discovering what you discovered in the suit, even though we are precluded from doing it legally. It seems though that if those concepts could be explored, um, in addition to just getting something from that instead of nothing, right? Instead of just getting four percent for the next forty years. If I'm reading this correctly, the suit was able to get seventy percent of the taxes gra- graduating up all the years. So it feels to me, I just want to say if there's a no tonight on the pilot as it's written at the three or four percent, that it is, it doesn't necessarily in my mind mean no on the Gardner project potentially. And what it could do is allow what somebody said, a few more months. Three or four months while we go through the next readings of the new ideas, especially if something like what the suit could do, could be done. I think that would address a lot of the concerns. I didn't hear anybody speaking against the wonderful idea of repurposing Washington Gardner, having, having um affordable units that ninety-five percent of of, of city workers and other workers might be eligible for. I didn't hear anyone really speaking against that. It's the forty years. It's the locked in at four percent that I heard. So thank you for everything you've done. Um, and I just wanna say that a no tonight does not necessarily in my mind mean a no to the project. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to stand and address counsel?
Again. Dustin. One, two, nine, seven. Again, I want to encourage you to vote yes on this tonight. Uh, the pilot program, I think is a strong step forward. It is not something that we're stepping back. It is something that we're doing to help. And if you vote yes tonight, I don't, I was listening to some of the things about the charter. It is something that maybe could be addressed after the fact, but still move forward tonight. Uh, so that you don't sit. Otherwise, you know, I, uh, I am history has shown how we've handled this in the past, I think like this in the past. You know, we have uh vacant land on Cas, Culver and so forth, that was supposed to be this great panacea that was gonna be straightened out. We have Austin School that's been sitting there for years. We have uh Darample School that is now contaminated site. You know, and then we have this building right now that has someone who's willing to do something and you know, move forward. Bottom line, just move forward, you know, just sitting back and saying, you know, I'm not sure, hoping, I think I might, you know, uh, hope so doesn't pay the bills, you know, you have to make a decision on what you have in your hand. And I believe you have an opportunity right now and I think you should take that opportunity and I think you should vote yes on that uh opportunity that you have in front of you tonight. And so I strongly encourage you to go forward. I strongly encourage you. Uh, the community is, is, is rooting for you to move in a positive direction, which is to say uh accept this proposal, move forward and let's continue to have the camaraderie and, and the discussions we had tonight uh on what they need to do in the future to, to even improve on what we have. I think we should move forward. Uh, in fact, I vehemently believe you should move forward and make a positive decision tonight. Thank you.
It's Avant, nine twenty-one North Marion, just coming here to say once again that I support this project. I support the pilot and I'm an advocate for everyday hardworking people and I think that we should look to rebuild the city so that it's a place for everyone.
My name is Eileen Williams and I live at eight oh eight South Eaton Street here in Albion. And I um am for the pilot and moving toward for housing. Um, as I, I have been traveling a little bit and I've been looking at different places which are just blooming from Jackson to Battle Creek, everybody but Al here. Because of the no's. Because they don't want, um, they don't wanna see an improvement. That's what I see. I, 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 I don't think that um everybody's best interest is at hand for the community. It's a community thing, you know? Um, Councilman Williams has been really pushing this um to go through where I don't see any other council people. You, you know, you may be doing something, but you ain't really out there um pushing for it for the community. I don't see it. But um, I strongly agree and there has been research done and shown to us that it will be better for the community. Um, I see people wanna pack up and leave because it's not growing. And as Pastor Kirk said about all these different places, Darample School, contaminated, but y'all still let people walk through there. If it's contaminated, contaminated, do something about it. And y'all have the right and the voice to do this. I don't see that happening and I see Austin School. I see so many different places going down along with our city. Our schools are gone. We, we we need y'all, we need y'all to, to step up. I mean, I see y'all family doing good, y'all eating good, you got businesses. Let somebody else eat. Let somebody else have a place to stay in the name of Jesus.
Would anybody else like to stand and address counsel? All right, see no movement. Do I have a motion to approve of the consent calendar items?
Some move.
In your package, we have the August fourth regular session and the August eleventh study session. Any questions or comments? Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do I have a motion for the transfer of funds?
Some move.
Uh, Director Clark, who did I get? I saw you somewhere.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I was asked to visit the subject that we've brought up a couple of times by writing a memo. Uh, suggesting that we transfer the Albion Trust money that's invested. Um, I think we discussed this a few times, um, after talking with Colin. I understand is uh once Maple Grove was sold that um, the trust should wind up and the money should be transferred into the general fund. Um, I want to say that uh the money is not being transferred to the general fund because the general fund is not doing well. Um, it will stay invested and it will be there until the council decides what to do with it. So that's what I wrote here. Um, I did send a report to show the amount of money. Uh, the staple July thirty-first report um shows that there's one point two million twelve thousand, six hundred and ninety one, or six hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty cents. So I also wanted to mention that the timing would be good because there's some investments inside the report that are gonna be filed on eight thirty-one. And what that means is that it's gonna be cashed in. So the one point two million as of August thirty-first will be available. And so it could be transferred into the general fund's name. And it could be shown in fund balance. I can show it, we can restrict it. And the council can decide when and what to use or not. So but the timing would be good. And I'll leave the, you know, the if we should or shouldn't, or if we can or cannot transfer the money based on the trust up to Colin. Uh, or uh Colin, because I'm not an attorney. Um, I know that um there's a trust agreement out there that I provided to, you know, Colin. And so and I just wanted to show counsel what was available. And based on our discussions back and forth with Colin, um, that it should be sent back to the general fund.
Attorney Hartness, do you have comments?
Uh, so I don't have the trust in front of me, but I can tell you generally it says the trust ceases to, ceases to exist upon the sale of Maple Grove. And that any funds still held in the trust account are to be distributed to the grantor, which in this case is the city. So whether it's general fund or another fund, it doesn't really matter. It just means that once the trust terminates, the funds come back to the city. My suggestion would be, um, the trust was set up in a way to to be a uh basically a slush fund to use for Maple Grove when it needed it. To the extent that it wasn't needed from Maple Grove, it was to be used for capital improvement projects in the city. So I would suggest, you know, I, I would say leave it in the Director Clark's good judgment into what investment vehicle to put that in to maximize it for the city. But I would restrict it to capital improvements for the city until the funds are exhausted.
Right. So what I would do is, um, it would stay invested. Um, and then I would probably move it into uh an investment vehicle, just like I do all the other funds. It would be under the general funds. It'll be in the general fund itself. And uh um, it could be used for like Colin said, for as like a slush fund to help out in case we have capital project funds that we're gonna use in the future, that we're gonna do in the future. Um, but I leave that up to the council. I just think that um, once the Maple Grove was sold, that we should wind up the Albion Trust and get the money back to the general fund. Um, it could be, once it's in the general fund, if any other fund needs the money for say like for streets or capital improvements on our street improvement fund or on our um, or sewer or water, the money could always be transferred into those funds to handle and help the projects. So any transfers would have to be approved by council. And so it's just a way that we're winding up the trust, getting the money back into the general fund. And it will stay invested. It will continue to earn money and it's up to the council what happens to it in the future. But it lets us have a little room there to uh have in case we run into things like we've been running into with the projects that we're doing and the things that we're finding.
Any questions for Director Clark or Attorney Hartness?
Just a clarification here. We refer to these funds as cash reserve. Well, not slush. Um, I wanna make that distinction. It's very important that the public knows. It's very important that the public knows that we're good stewards of your money. That we, through David's careful review, we were, we invest these monies carefully. Any spending of monies are done under a microscope and we use a competitive bid process to buy things. Only those things that are necessary, as you know, driving around town. Um, we have a lot of streets that are tore up. Some of these streets, some of the infrastructure was laid in nineteen oh nine. And what we have found is that some of this, when we open up the street, we're almost compelled to replace some of that infrastructure. It doesn't make any sense for us knowing that it's inadequate, it's failing, only to cover it up and give it to another generation to fix. So, what we've done is we have been strategic in the way that we take an approach. One of the things that concerned me going down the road is, for example, fire truck. We, we need fire trucks. We have at least two fire trucks that really serve as our primary. We want to make sure that we can protect you. Our public safety department wants to make sure that we have officers and equipment that can respond to your needs at any given time. We want to make sure that the water is adequate. It is not backing up or at the same time turning color. So, these are things that we want to do is provide good services to you. So, it's not a slush fund. It's what we refer to as cash reserves to be spent in the most judicious and responsible manner. So, I want to make that clarification.
Any council member questions? Councilman Williams?
Yeah, uh, just so I'm clear, David.
Mm-hmm.
We're transferring this, we're, we're ending the trust completely. It'll be transferred to the general fund in name, but it stays invested as well.
Exactly.
Okay, uh, what interest rate you seeing currently?
Um, so, the report that you're looking at down at the bottom right, uh, there's three types of investments that I have right now. Um, and the two hundred, there's fifteen thousand, that's just cash, basically. It was just a little bit.
Okay.
Maybe half a percent. Um, the two hundred and thirty-five thousand is right now earning six point two percent. I got into that, um, I think about a year and a half ago. This rate was so good.
Okay.
And I knew it was going to be called in August. They told me that it could have been called earlier. But fortunately it did not, so that's a very good interest rate, but it's going to end on August thirty-first.
Gosh.
And the other money, uh, the mutual fund money is, is liquid, meaning that we can do whatever we want with it. Um, that's earned four point zero five percent. So, the overall rate of return for the million two is four point four seven percent.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. City clerk?
Member Williams?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Snyder?
Yes. I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five hold four for the Washington Gardner Pilot Program with an amendment to paragraph I of duration from forty-five years to forty years. Do I have a support?
So, supported.
City manager Terry?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of council, in um, this discussion tonight, this is our last um, second reading of this ordinance. We've heard the public tonight and for the last month, um, we do have a representative from Community Housing Network. Um, Mr. CJ Felton, uh, Mr. Felton, why don't you take the podium, address uh, Albion City Council. Um, again, the administration worked with the mayor in trying to come up with more revenue. Um, unfortunately, that did not work out, so we are returned back to the original pilot. That was negotiated at seven percent, um, in an increase of six percent than what was originally introduced. I recall. And so, uh, we've done spreadsheets on that. And so, um, I welcome any questions or comments, but Mr. Felton is here tonight, Mayor. So, Mr. Felton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members, city staff. Um, I just want to briefly address municipal service agreement. Cause I know this came into, came into discussion at the very last minute. And I think there would be a fair question about why we had not originally had this conversation. Uh, we only have three, they're called MSAs. Um, that's the acronym. We only have three MSAs in all of the affordable housing developments that we've created. And the, and the reason is, they used to be fairly popular several years ago, but um, you, on the municipal services agreement, you retain a hundred percent of whatever that payment is, the, the city does. It's not shared with the other taxing entities. Could tell you like in southeast Michigan where there's a, a mileage for the zoo, for the Detroit Institute of Arts, for the bus system. That's a non-starter now in every community because those people get really grumpy. They're not getting their money. Um, so it's very, the last one we did with Susanne Ray, which I think was six, about over six years ago now. Um, I'm going to wish I didn't say this, but I will. If you were to approve the seven percent pilot tonight and there is some way to enter into that MSA between ourselves and the city, the pilot can always be amended. It's a very simple thing to do. It just comes back in front of council. You change it to four percent. We put the three percent municipal services agreement in and life goes on. Um, it does, the residents don't know this, but that combination between a four percent pilot and a three percent municipal services agreement, I think council, you all got this. Does the city realize it's seventy-eight hundred dollars more a year? Uh, for whatever purposes you use, I use them for, it's almost seventeen thousand dollars. Uh, would hold. Based on what the chief told us uh, last week, that should more than adequately cover the services needed by the development and leave something more to spare for the city. So, that is an option. If, if uh, Mr. Harkness can find a way to make that work, we're, we're open. And with that, I can answer any questions that you have.
Do we have any questions? Yeah.
That's music to my ears because uh, I didn't know the agreement could be changed. I assumed that we could make a memorandum of understanding or whatever you want to call it. But that is new information that we didn't have in terms of the municipal service agreement that it can enter into consideration after the pilot has begun.
I would defer to city attorney, but I'm quite certain there's an easy way to amend an ordinance if the city so chooses to do that.
Hmm, we just amended like we would any other ordinance.
Attorney, so there is a way to amend after the fact. So, any other questions for Mr. Felton, while he's here with us? All right.
Thank you.
Did you want to add anything?
No, just that at this time, Madam Mayor, members of council, unless there's uh, debate, um, the next thing would be is that uh, there's a motion and um, a decision needs to be made.
So, I guess I would like to make a few comments on this. Um, like I said, we listen to all of your comments, your concerns, your support and your objections. We, we take that information and we try to do what is best for the city. I have been in favor of this because like many have said, we need housing. I was actually, and I mentioned this earlier, I was at a Michigan mayor's conference a couple of weeks ago. And we had a representative from the Michigan Municipal League who did a presentation on still the housing crisis that we have in Michigan. And she said, do not question, we are still in a crisis. We need housing. And like I stated back in our July meeting, I am in favor of this because it's in our comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is our compass for decisions that we make for the city of Albion. In that comprehensive plan, there is findings that state we need housing for the missing middle. This addresses the missing middle. Yes, we would like to see more money, but some money is better than no money.
Yeah.
I am in favor of this because like many have said, our city was built on the back of the working. My parents came to this town as migrant workers who needed housing. We cannot forget how we were built. I will not forget how we were built. We need this development for the folks who live in Albion, who work in Albion, who spend money in Albion. This will address that need. Cause like we've said, and I know people and I know everybody on this council know people that had to move away because they could not find affordable housing. They had to. And I hear this time and time again. So, I'm in support of this because of those reasons.
Any other councilman comments? Councilman Davis?
Um, I have, I have considered this. You said, only one person has been speaking up, but all of us have it right here. And because this is a very sensitive subject, it's a very important subject. And Ms. Counselor here always look at the positive. You know, look at the positive aspects of this kind of decision, what kind of impact it's going to make on the city as well as on the lives of people that I care for forty years plus uh, that I've been in the community and raised my kids as well. Uh, one of the positives, a lot of us are getting to the age of downsizing. And downsizing uh, professionals, uh, teachers, you know, educators, people who have moved away, they would have stayed in Albion had they been able to find a one-bedroom or a two-bedroom home as they have found in Chelsea. And Chelsea has a lot of Albion people. You go there and you almost have a family reunion there because of all of the people there. We can have that here. My vision is as well, you know, you know, we will have quote unquote affordable housing, but it will also address the need for senior housing where I may want to move, I may want to downsize. And I can open my home up for a, a employee, maybe someplace else who is looking for housing. So, it's a ripple effect in terms of more people moving into the smaller units because of the necessity of, of downsizing, that opens up, that opens up more housing in Albion in addition to the apartment complex. So, we have housing, the ripple effect is only a positive things for people who are in need of housing or transitional homes. Um, so I'm in favor of it. And I've always been in favor of it, even though I don't talk a lot sometimes.
Councilor Ross?
Thank you, Mary. Um, I've spoken with a number of people um, about this in my own precinct and certainly it's, it's divided and it's a sensitive topic. And I can tell you that there is not a single person on this council against housing of every kind. We know that we need it. But my question is that right now we currently have six developments like this one. Two of them are uh, pilots and then four of them are uh, they're not generating any property taxes for the city. We've got a lot of projects going on. This, if this goes true, this will be number seven. We talk about, we've heard about that these projects are going to, like Washington Gardner, will bring business. It will bring more people spending money. We've got six already. Look at our roads. We're transferring money so that we can pay for more of the improvements for our needed critical infrastructure. This infrastructure serves all of us here. Low income, middle income, high income. My concern and my fear is that we aren't looking far enough into the future of where is the money coming from? Because like it or not, taxes, ad valorem property taxes, which is the kind that we're trying to get this developer to help us more up in the middle. We're not, I wouldn't say no to him outright. But what I do want to see is, I want to see more ad valorem taxes or taxes in that direction. And I'm afraid that this just isn't enough to accomplish the kinds of goals that we need to see in Albion for all of our lives to be better. How many of us are, uh, have had to take advantage of the, the lead water uh, treatment uh, that went around a few months ago? Well, that's because it hasn't been updated in what, since nineteen oh nine or earlier? That's because it hasn't been paid for in over a hundred years. We're talking about things that need to be paid for that haven't been taken care of in over a hundred years because the money hasn't been there. And I just don't see that having a seventh non-tax revenue generating project in town is going to help us meet the goals for everybody here. These don't meet, the requirements meet, we, the requirements that we have for education. Taxes going to education, taxes going to our parks and recreation. Taxes that go to our emergency services and our government employees. We already know that we're short on government employees. Mr. Harkness doesn't work here in the city yet every single day. Our tax assessor doesn't. Um, uh, and our, our treasurer doesn't. Uh, we subcontract our code enforcement uh, company because we can't afford them here. The people that we all depend on to have a really great thriving city, city, uh, city here, we can't afford them. So, we have to hire them part-time or we do without them. So, I, I'm imploring us to, to think long-term about this. And speaking of long-term, probably the thing I've heard most about that people aren't on board with is the length of the term, forty years, forty-five years. Uh, you know, I'm, I'll be in my nineties, uh, if I'm lucky. Uh, so, but what company, let alone, you know, uh, people are the same after forty-five years. So, we want housing. Yes, we need housing. Yes, we need to take care of everyone, especially by the helping hands of those who are, you know, at the bottom and raise them up. Yes, yes, yes. But we need to also know and be critical about what, where we're going to get those tools to accomplish that. And it's, I, I know most of us have made up our mind at this table, but I, this isn't because I, I, you know, uh, not against housing. It's not that at all. It's just, I, I, two years ago, I moved my family here and I've moved my parents here. And I want to see a place that we can all be proud of. I'm going to be here for a long time. And, and I, I know that Mr. Williams is too, and all of us are hopefully for a long time. Let's live long enough and hopefully as short enough so we can all see a real thriving place. And once we can, you know, when we handle the money side of things, we can take care of people. My grandmother always said, if you don't have it, you can't give it away. Well, if we're giving away these properties, if we're giving away our opportunities to make, you know, good, sound investments with our money. Yeah, we, we really can't give it away, right? Thank you.
Any other council member comments? Councilman Williams?
Yeah, um, it's something they do in church. I always get a laugh out of, uh, you look over to your neighbor, you say, neighbor? Neighbor, this development is said to be twenty-five and a half million dollars. Neighbor, let's just say it's twenty million dollars. You take that number and divide it by the number of units, neighbors, put in your calculators, look at how much that is. For the proposed actual cost of it, we're north of four hundred thousand dollars for a one-bedroom unit. Listen to me. We as a city just bought and built a house and we're selling it for two hundred and twenty thousand. Most of the people in the room is like, who y'all not? Not my tax dollars? Two hundred and twenty thousand dollars? Y'all couldn't make it affordable for us, right? It seems high, right? It seems high, right? So let me tell you, four hundred thousand dollars for a one bedroom apartment. Will not recoup in the timeframe. That it would take a market rate apartment to recoup. Meaning a ten-year window. That's when that loan gotta be paid off for market rate housing. Okay, me, unlike some of my other council members, I've studied development. I study development. This is what I do so that I can have these conversations. And know how they affect our taxpayers and the people in the community. Okay? Now. What you think the rent or the mortgage payment on four hundred thousand dollars would be? North of four thousand dollars a month, right?
Right.
Somewhere up in there. Okay, so the other option that was discussed previously was, well, we'll do, let's do market rate. Let's not do affordable. Okay, who here can afford four thousand dollars a month? I ain't seen a hand yet, neighbor? My neighbor Mike, she do good. My neighbor Mike, my, I, I, listen, I do good. I don't do that good. I'm telling you. I do good. I don't do that good. So, um. For us to consider something else, let's consider the past. For the past fifteen years, there hasn't been nothing else.
Right.
Ain't nothing else coming. Let me pose this to you all. Have the paper not written something that our city attorney said? In a misrepresentation of how pilots work and his correspondence with the community housing network. None of us will be upset about this. You want to know why? Because Lincolnshire is still here. Oak Meadows is still here. Carriage House is still here. Forty years from now, what are you talking? I don't know when Lincolnshire was built. It wasn't built when I was one. It's been there as long as I've been alive, to my knowledge. Now somebody could tell, neighbor. If you can tell me different, tell me different. But these apartment complexes, I'm forty-two, I'll be forty-three next month. These apartment complexes have been producing and providing housing for people and bringing in revenue and income. From people helping to support the city for as long as I've been here. Last week, the argument was, well, if we don't, if we do what we did for the last twenty years, we'll be doing the same thing. These are. Out of touch conversations. Cause if I say, neighbor, twenty years ago, what happened here and now? My neighbor would probably say we lost over a thousand jobs here. So it wasn't the time to build market rate housing. The Malibu, right? Everybody had Cadillacs when the Malibu was here. Everybody. My grandmama had a Cadillac, cat had a Cadillac. Everybody got, my neighbor across the street had a Cadillac. My neighbor downstream had a Cadillac.
Right.
My, my other neighbor up the street, she lived to be a hunter. She drove Lincoln's. But what I'm telling y'all is. The ball keeps moving, the goalpost keeps moving. But the facts stay the same. We need housing. Our people fit the income need. We can't put market rate housing there because nobody's paying on a four hundred thousand dollar one bedroom. I don't care who you are. Um, and keep this in mind, that four thousand, we can offer to somebody for three hundred. Neighbor? If this ain't what we need, I don't know what's wrong with us. And I don't know if I want to live here no more because we too do dumb to help ourselves. Thank you.
Any other council member comments?
Thank you, Mayor. And, uh, Don, Mister Williams, I really appreciate your passion. And I appreciate everybody who's here speaking on this and some of my neighbors, many people I love very much. And it's disheartening, some of the characterizations. But you know, we all feel passionate about this. So. I'm, I'm in the north because I'm looking at. You know, to your, to your point, Mister Williams, about doing things the same way we've been doing things. And I, I've only been here twelve years, so you know, I'm a newbie. Get it. And I, I hear it a lot. And, uh, but I'm fully invested. And guess what I'm invested in? I'm invested in affordable housing. And I'm working on it. Somebody said, hey, Jim, are you, you worried about getting, uh, competition? Like, heck no. We need ten times, twenty times more housing than what we have, but we're working actively on it. So, so we recognize the need and, and, uh, many of our counterparts who are doing the same thing. We appreciate every one of them. And maybe one thing that's missing is we don't do a good job of, uh, everything that is already going on. There's a lot going on right now. So. I, I, my hope is that as a council, we can have differences of opinion. And as a public, we can have differences of opinion without impugning each other. And I have a difference of opinion on this. It doesn't mean that I have. The reason behind it that maybe you're thinking of unless you've spoken to me like Mister Kurtz, who knows where I'm coming from. Um, it just means I see it differently. And we want that on our council. So. My concern is that. The thing that we're not doing the same, Mister Williams, is we're not, we're not demanding that we do things. In a fiscally responsible manner that bring revenue to our town at every turn. And because we're not doing that, and we haven't been doing that, we are facing crises like we are today. And I've only been on the council, you know, handful a month, but we've had to, we've had to get. Out, we'd have to make special arrangements for water and for, for, uh, various projects, a lot of money. And that's a reflection of us not having enough revenue coming into our town. So that's, that's where it ends as far as our differences. That's what I'm fighting for. So, so I, I'm right with you on the need for housing and, and we think. Stacy and I think every day of how can we get more and what can we do? And who can we entice to come help? So it's not that. We don't want to push anybody out of town. In fact. My feeling for this is not because I want someone not to be here. It's the opposite. It's the people who are here, who I care deeply about. I work with these kids at soccer practice and, and I meet these people out in the street. And I'm friends with a lot of y'all. And we might disagree, but. I'm concerned about our future into the next number of years. And we need, I think, as a council, we need to make fiscally responsible decisions. And when I look at the idea that, um, with the, with the pilot as, as it exists. Not only would the city get less than a third of the revenue we would get if it was ad valorem taxes. So six out of nine of our twenty-plus multi-units, six out of nine pay no taxes. I agree, we need the housing, but we also need tax revenues. Six out of nine. This would make seven out of ten. So seventy percent won't be paying taxes on our multi-units. Our twenty or more multi-units. So at the end of forty years, the city would have realized about one-third of their revenue. With a pilot compared to what we would have realized from ad valorem taxes. Counties got it even worse. They're only going to realize about a quarter of the revenue that we would have received. These are numbers projected. These are projections. These aren't hard numbers. So that means our public schools and the other, the other line items for the taxes. So. I gotta tell you, this has been a really hard one. Cause I want to vote yes. But I feel with my heart that it's not the fiscally responsible thing for us to do. Now, I imagine it's going to go through and, and I hope my fellow council people and my citizens can forgive me for voting no. But it's, it's with a heart that I vote no. It's not because I'm afraid of somebody or don't want progress. It's quite the opposite. I want longevity. So, uh, that's, that's my piece.
So I will say one comment before I turn this all over. Um, this is not a done deal. Um, couple of months down the road, if you don't hear anything because, you know. The rumor mill likes to start things that, like I said before, is out of context and sometimes misinformation. This is just giving community housing network the. Tool to apply for grants, to make this a reality. They don't have twenty-six million sitting in a bank account to do the development. They have to apply for grants and tax credits. So this may or may not happen. This is just giving them. That tool to apply for that. So if they don't get approval, this may not happen. So just keep that in the back of your mind, that if it doesn't come through, it's not because they didn't put their best effort forward. It's just because it's a very competitive process to get those funds. Okay, so it's not a done deal. Just kind of keep that in the back of your mind. Mayor for town.
Thank you. So I feel like all of our conversations for the last six to eight weeks have been. We have one of two choices to make. We say yes, or we say no. And I'm going to argue that the Washington Gardner building, which we've heard from lots of citizens about. Is quite unique. In that the building itself, how it was constructed, makes for redevelopment. Very, very difficult and financially unreasonable without some form of help. And we are defining that help in this city as saying. Here is a school that was built in eighteen and then built again in nineteen oh. And then built again in nineteen fifty-ish, et cetera. And never in that history has that building ever paid ad valorem taxes. Just hasn't. That school building would be cheaper if you were to build housing for market rate. Or even subsidized in some fashion. To build fifty-one units in that space in that footprint would be far cheaper. To spend two million dollars and knocking it down and rebuilding something new. But we are making a choice as citizens of Albion with a passion for history. And a developer who shares that sense of historic significance. That we want that building to look and feel as much like it did when our grandparents. Went to high school there, when our parents went to high school there, when our kids went to middle school there. And so there is no market plan for a market rate or. Accessible housing that doesn't involve some sort of government assistance. That just, there, it doesn't exist. Fourteen inch steel reinforced concrete floors and walls makes for a very expensive repurpose. And so I would argue that we do need development to create the kinds of tax increases. The property taxes. And so we need to attract developers who will build those houses. It's not like we're making a decision that we're going to wait for a developer to build. Market rate with property tax paying units in the Washington Gardner building. Cause that ain't happening. It just isn't. The cost of doing that is too high. The profit return on investment is too long. It's just not happening. So I would say we do both. And we have plans to do both. We have developers who are in conversation with us about building market rate housing. That is accessible to all and to some, and we should applaud that. We should vote for that. We should support that. But this unique building has one opportunity. It really does. And it's a long shot. Having gone through historic tax credits and investigated them for, as part of my job. I know this is a long shot and we as a city cannot get in the way of it. We've done pilots with two other developers. I don't know if they're even gonna happen. So us accepting a pilot is the beginning of a very long and arduous path. I don't want to be in the way of it. So I'm going to support it.
Any other comments?
I'm ready to vote.
Assistant City Clerk.
Council member Reed.
Yes.
Stuart?
No.
Frost?
No.
David?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Snyder?
Yes.
Do you turn agenda items? Anything council would like to see? Mayor for town.
Yeah, so we received, I think, from you or from somebody to, was it Jim?
Councilman Frost.
Councilman Frost, the, uh, House Bill forty-five oh five and six regarding historic tax credit expansion.
Yes.
So I would like that to be on the next agenda so that we can approve that. I actually forwarded your email to the city of Coldwater where I work. Since where I'm working is looking to apply for those things in a couple of years. I think we as a city need to do that, especially given how we are supporting development and trying to preserve the historic nature of our city. Like to see that on the next agenda. It won't be too late, I don't think.
I hope not.
I think it's after Labor Day, right? That they.
I think that's correct.
So I think we'll be okay.
Any other items?
I'd just like to say thank you to the N A C P for.
Do you have an agenda item?
Oh, no.
Public comments? If there's anybody in the council that would like to stand and address council? Give us your name, address, and three minutes is yours.
Good evening, council. Uh, Assistant. Oh, it is. Thank you. Uh, good evening, council mayor. Uh, I wanted to thank you for this vote of yes and confidence. In the likelihood and pray for this to become a reality. Um, mayor, I want to especially appreciate you for looking into the M S A. Um, it is a, a good tool and I appreciate the flexibility and trying anything. So, um, that's, that was an incredible, incredible feat, I'm sure, to pull that off and even get it to spark. So, um, if we do have flex, flexibility in these things, and I just really appreciate you looking at that because it's a viable opportunity. Um, I would like to continue to request that the Albion Trust, Albion Housing Trust. Sorry, I'm using the wrong word. Albion Trust money. Um, it is something you could do. Is set that money aside for capital improvements at current public housing. It came from Maple Grove and that money was derived from excess funds. In the, in the purpose of housing. So there really is a thought here that that should be. Possibly given to the housing commission. And some thoughts should be given to talking to HUD. About what they call a RAD project, Rental Administration Rental. Something with an A demonstration and it would bring tens of millions of dollars into the city. And it would create and it would recreate all the public housing. That's Lincolnshire and others that are public housing, the two hundred twenty units of public housing. Can't talk about the privately held, the carriage houses. That's someone's privately held project. Nothing you can do with that anymore than you could when, uh, when this comes online because it's owned by a private person. But the two hundred twenty uses of public housing that haven't had any major capital in, in, infrastructure in years. Could benefit not only from that one point something million, but talking to HUD about doing a RAD project. And it brings a ton of money. It recreates the entity that holds them. So that it's outside of the government. It relieves the government of the work that it takes to run housing. So you can go back to running a city. So that is one way to really use and pivot. And leverage those dollars rather than pay them for an overrun on the roads. It really needs to be thoughtful. It came from housing. It should stay with housing. Uh, my time is up and I appreciate your time.
Hi, I'm Albrecht showers, eight oh five, Valhalla Drive. I am thankful for your vote. I appreciate your vote, uh, because we need housing. Um, if we didn't do this or if it don't go through, what else would we do? How would we bring housing into our city? So this is the first step and I'm praying that you get the funds. Get the grants, get whatever you need to bring our housing and play in Albion. And we need more than this, but this is beginning. And I just wanted to say I appreciate your vote and I thank you and I've been talking and I thank you. I, I talked to my council. Thank you. I I talked to my councilperson. I say, I'm with it. I'm with anything that I can do or anything I can help. Here I am. But my prayers, I continue to go up for the city of Albien. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Ronnie Sim, seven ten West Erie Street. And uh I would just like to thank each of you for your vote of confidence. What I mean by that is whether you vote a yes or no. I heard a voice of confidence from each of you and you researched and you thought about the project. I heard some key terms out of your conversation, uh longevity, opportunities. And sustainability. And so I want to thank you all for that. This is not the only project that exists in Albien. It won't be the last. It wasn't the first and it won't be the last. There will be other opportunities. To come to us as a community and you as a council to vote and have the same vote of confidence. Uh, in yourselves and in the future of this city. So continue to look, continue to research. And uh look out for the citizens because forty years from now, I'll be over a hundred. But my grandson may be here. So we got to look out for them and what's best for them. There's plenty of opportunities that's coming our way. So let's just stay alert and bring as much revenue and positivity to our community as possible. And we we will, I really believe that we will come back around to being that melting pot, that all American city. So thank you for your service and uh thank you for your vote of confidence.
Again, Renee Miller, two oh eight Miss Drive. I just want to say thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And even Mr. Frost and Mrs. Stewart, we heard you. And 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 I I come in your business and I've come in and bought books, you know, because I'm a reader. So I I also support you and I heard you. I just want to say to you, thank you again. It sounds like, because I'll be honest with you, I had been in my husband's ear and I've said. I am so serious about selling our home and cutting our losses here. Because it didn't feel like Albion was open for business. But it sounds like it's open for business. And God answered my prayer, because it that. Somebody else, this is open for business, because with this developer, other people will say, hmm. Let's consider Albion. There, you can do business with Albion. And I, just some years ago, I'm a reader, I told you guys I'm a reader. So looking at other communities that has. That were really nothing and built up all through the south, just in the last ten, fifteen, twenty years. They were offering these type of incentives and these the communities are booming. So sometimes you gotta give a little. You gotta give a little to get a little. That's how the game is played. We know that. So and I want to say thank you. I I wish you nothing but success. Work hard. To get it done. If you need some help, come back and let us know. You know, I'm a social media. I get on social media and talk about them. So. You know, if they don't help you out, let us know. But just thank you, thank you.
Frank Fastic here, nine hundred Southeast Street. Uh, my vision of Washington Gardner, it can be a showpiece when people come to town. It's right on the main highway. They're going to say, what is that? And we could show them what that is. It could be a tourist place. We've got that atrium in there. We can put back the historical pictures. Maybe grab the bell, which is the other side of this wall, put it back where it's supposed to be. And and uh, by the way, it's Washington Gardner High School. It says so right on the top there. And um, the 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 thing which I I'm I'm actually want to talk about is, I'm very impressed with the professionalism of how they're doing our street. On on Southeast Street. They're doing such a good job. They put two extra test patients that aren't the regular squiggly square rectangles. They've got two round ones to handle all the water coming down from Ash Street, Mechanic Street, Nish Street, at the at the Oak and 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 it's right near Jim there. And it's it's a uh, they're doing a good job. They've taken our suggestions. They've taken my suggestions. Uh, about where I live and and they're really addressing that. I'm very proud of that. Whoever they hired at Concord Place, but they are doing a wonderful job and I'm looking forward to having a page street again. So you you hired the right contractor. So that's why I have to say, thank you.
Again, Tim Kurtz, two oh eight Irwin Avenue. I didn't do that the first time. I just remembered I put that down. Again, thank you for your vote. Thank you for uh, supporting this. And I really believe what I sense in my spirit really is that we did open a door, a portal that people are going to say, this is something. Happening in Albion. I mentioned, you mentioned about nineteen oh nine, about a hundred years, that nothing had happened. Can I be honest and be. Trying to be nice about it, but it has happened because for a hundred years, that wasn't that kind of resolved to help a community. But to help ourselves and I'll leave it at that. So now you said, I'm going to help the community and help everyone. And make sure everyone has an opportunity uh, to have decent and affordable housing. Thank you for your vote. I appreciate your vote. And I'll be definitely praying that you have absolute success in everything that you do uh, going forward looking. Because I know the process can be cumbersome, but uh, it is, it is doable. It is doable. So. Uh, and I believe we're going to see our city alight, a beam. Uh, we're going to begin to see something. Moving us forward. And so I really appreciate your vote. Thank you very much.
I see no movement. Uh, city manager report.
Yes, uh, the only thing I have to report, as you know, on Friday night, Lakeland Asphalt had completed baby. Um, from Ash all the way to our city limits south. And it turned out pretty good. Well, they'll uh, they'll paint stripes uh, pretty soon, but it turned out really well. I think the the crosswalks, the cement work, that is looking very good. Um, Eden Street has had its challenges. Uh. But we're moving on. Uh, and the project's not done. Um. Unfortunately, we'll have still some more construction to do next year, but bear with us. We're making it better. So. That's all I have, mayor.
Do you want to make a comment about downtown Superior Street?
Or ceiling?
The ceiling?
Yeah.
So we have bricks down on Superior Street from Ash all the way um, to Michigan Avenue. And because of that, there will be a ceiling, an epoxy light ceiling. Of those bricks that will be coming up. And we're working with some of the businesses like the bank. Uh, but we will not be able to drive on that for three to four days. That road will be completely closed. Sidewalks will be open. You know, hopefully people will be able to park on the streets on each side, but. Uh, and we'll have to use the rear door entrances, but it's just part of maintaining those bricks. Those bricks are beautiful, but they have to be maintained. And the way that we have to do it is by putting down. A resin or some type of epoxy coating to preserve that. So it will be an inconvenience for probably close to weeks, but it's coming up very soon.
So it'll be the first week in September?
Yes.
First week of September. So be kind to our downtown businesses. Find a way to still get there. To, you know, show them your love, show them your your business. Um, just kind of be patient with us. Again, I I keep asking for patience. Because I know this is going to be an inconvenience. Um, so find a way to still get to your downtown downtown business, Sterling. I know people love to go buy their books and their ice cream. Um, so find a way, use the back doors. Be patient, look around for the parking spots, um, but just be aware that hopefully. This will be done and our bricks will be beautiful in time for the festival.
Citizens, when you see city employees, tell them hi. Pat them on the back. It's been a hot summer. They've done an excellent job. The cemetery looks great. The parks look great. Um, our public safety works hard. They're in their vests and it's been, you know how hot it is. Everybody and including City Hall, everybody in that building works hard for you, very hard for you. So I just want you to. Take the time and pat them on the back. Tell them what a great job they've done. So we'd appreciate it.
Pat him on the back too, because he he is really, really good with announcing them all.
Councilmember comments? Councilman Reed, I could cut you off?
Uh, yes. Uh, I I just wanted to say, I I thank everyone who has been doing the back to school, the NAACP did theirs tonight. Last Saturday, um, uh, sharing and giving, this is Valerie Clemmer from Detroit. I mean, from uh, Battle Creek came over and they did one, two, and so it's really being helpful to our students. To our children who is going back to school. They're getting the supplies and things that they need to go back to school. And so, you know, just thank.
Along with that, I want to say bravo to the NAACP for another wonderful event this evening. You know, we are so thankful. For your leadership in our community to provide for our kids, our babies who need. And so, like I said in my post, I always enjoy seeing the excitement of little kids, but it's even funnier how excited the parents are. Yeah, so um, appreciate all that you do for our Marshall Public Schools. Uh, it was a good turnout. Other council member comment?
Very. I would like to say thank you to the audience, those of you who have spoken. Those of you who are here to support one way or the other. That's what we are here for. We're here. To listen to you, for you to guide us. This is our community. All of us can live here in harmony. We can agree to disagree, but the main purpose of sitting at this table. Is to represent you. So thank you for your input. Thank you for your advice and we listen to you. And we will continue to listen to you.
Thank you, Mary.
Um, I'd like to say thank you to everybody that came out today, everybody that showed support. Um, those that even question the process. We do have to vet and make sure that our city is protected from um. Overspending bad and poor decisions. You know what I mean? We do have to do that. Um, but I'm going to tell you, don't believe the newspaper. Don't ever believe the newspaper. Y'all got a question, call me. I'll tell you the truth. All right, neighbor. Um, now let me tell you something. Um, after the last meeting, I found out that one of my friends had recently moved. This was disheartening to me because he lived in Old Meadows. He moved back to Albion after serving in the military. He moved back here to take care of his mother, his mother who's suffering from a illness. They recently had to move because of the rate hike in their um, their rent. Okay, um. I I would say his name, but I haven't discussed this with him prior previously. Um, it's a little late to help him, but it's on time for the rest of the community. So let's just keep that in mind. Thank you.
Councilman Frost.
Mayor, uh, thank you, everyone, for coming out, for speaking, me and the other council members. One of the things that's challenging about being a public representative is trying to speak uh, your truth. Uh, and even if it's unpopular, but one of the duties of a public servant is to serve and support the public. When they speak. And I want you all to know, and my counsel as well, that. I fully support this council and us moving forward, Mr. Felton and this project. I wanted to see it be as absolutely as successful it could possibly be for this community.
I I was going to say something similar. I I want to say thanks to the council for your patience with. You know, I I I saw things differently. Um, you guys were really compelling. And although I didn't, it didn't change my feeling, I I did. I want to say I did do my research. I have a lot of information that I didn't have before. So this hard one was really good for me to learn. I learned a lot. If you want to hear some of it, I'm happy to share, share it with you. It's um, it's uncovered a lot of things that um, I think we still need to work on. Uh, but I want to say too that I I appreciate, um, I appreciate the dialogue and I think um. With uh, with this going into uh, approval, then I and I met Mr. Felton. I kind of like the guy. And uh, I I think we are, not that it matters, I guess, but um, but I I. I too am uh, fully, you know, we made our decision and I respect all of you and uh, I'm. I'll be right alongside pushing this thing to work and uh, go forward and. Uh, I I appreciate every one of you who spoke up and the tone tonight was was very good. And I'm so proud of us collectively for having a a very good um. Discussion on this. So thank you, everyone. Thanks for your patience with me. Look forward to the next hard thing where I get to learn a bunch of stuff.
So one last thing, uh, we do have Walk the Beat this Saturday. If you haven't seen advertisements downtown Albion. There will be twenty different bands playing at different times. So weather should be good. Uh, another good day to come downtown, join community, gather, have fun, listen to some music. And then at the end, we have Warren Treaty, who will, who will be performing outside of the Malibu. So that's going to draw crowds. So I would encourage you all to get there early if you want to get there.
Grammy Award winning.
Grammy Award winning. From Albion. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So who?
Support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.